You'll be amazed how effective kids can be when they put their minds to it. Kids have started petitions, created online action networks, and even testified before legislators. Kid power, you'll never know until you try.
This fact of Congress is adjourned.
Junior Teen Advisory Group watches EGTV. Yay!
We call Village Board meeting order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Bush?
Here.
Trustee Frankie?
Here.
Trustee Jerish?
Here.
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
We do have a quorum here tonight as we get started. Next, we move on to pledge allegiance and the invocation with Pastor Delgado from the Village Point Church. Everyone, please rise. Pastor, if you would, please. Let you go first.
Let's pray together. God, we come before you today with humble hearts. We ask that you would guide us and that you would bless over this meeting. In our time of transition in our nation with new leadership and fresh policies on the horizon, we acknowledge the uncertainty that change can bring, yet we take comfort in the truth that you remain unchanging. You are sovereign over all things. So we ask that you'd grant wisdom, discernment, and courage to the leaders of our nation and to the leaders here in Elk Grove Village to all that are in positions of influence. Let their decisions reflect justice and compassion and genuine care for the people that they serve as a church in this community. We desire to be more than observers. We long to be active partners, working hand in hand to meet the hands of those around us. So we pray that your light would shine through these opportunities that you have granted us. So we ask that you would continue to lead our steps. We confess that no man or policy can fully bring the justice and peace that our hearts long for. True justice flows from your hand, and lasting peace comes from you. So I pray that you would bless this time, bless this meeting, God, fill it with a spirit of unity and respect and purpose. And help us, God, guide us to build a community that reflects your love and your grace and in truth. And we pray all these things in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Flags to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated, folks. As we get started on things here, first I should, under the mayor and board of trustees' report, first let's do the approval of the minutes of January 14th, 2025.
He didn't give the chocolate.
Oh, pastor, my God, I'm gonna go to hell for sure now.
Well, we knew that already.
Hang on, pastor, come here, my God. See what happens? No counsel sitting next to me, I'm so worried I'm gonna do something wrong. Okay, so now he gets extra. So out of guilt, I'm trying to buy my way out of purgatory. Pastor, that's for you. Thank you for your time, appreciate everything. I hope the church is doing well. Village Point Church, great church. If you're looking for someplace to worship, definitely go there. Thanks, pastor.
Thanks.
See what you do to me, Mr. Delgado?
I apologize, ma'am.
You have to be all worried, that I do things good, make a good impression.
I will get better.
Okay, back now to approve the minutes of January 14th, 2025.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of January 14th, 2025, and dispense with the reading.
Very good, you know, I'm impressed.
I watch these things on TV.
Did you watch it like 50 times?
Uh huh.
Did you practice at home in front of Mary?
All the time.
Did you?
She does, she voted no.
Okay, we have a motion, I need a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Frankie, a second by trustee Jerish. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's a record, show and ask approval. Mayor and board of trustees report, yes, don't change your TV, don't correct the image or anything. We do have a real attorney here tonight. To my left here is Mr. Michael Delgado with the firm Delgado and Associates.
Delgado Law Group, yes.
Delgado Law Group. And he is gonna be our backup attorney now with the village, and we're excited about that and look forward to it. And again, we're excited to actually have an attorney here for the first time in 32 years I've been in board of the board. But we welcome you, Mike.
Thank you.
Wish you well. Again, I apologize for the nameplate, do not hold that against us. And I know George is watching, because he does watch when he's down there.
Oh, yeah.
So we do miss you, George. Yeah, okay. We miss you, hope you come back safely. Okay, we move on to our mayor's report. Record mayor's report tonight, gentlemen, let's get the clock going.
Yeah.
Go. Just two items. One, on April 10th, at the Belvedere, we'll be doing the annual village mayor's state of the village address. I want to encourage people that want to come by, see what's going on in the village and do well. I gotta break my record from last year, so that's why I'm pushing early to fill that place up. So I encourage you to that. Lastly, actually, one more thing. This Saturday, February 1st, from 9:00 to 11:00, remember, it's at 75 Turner, the old Elk Grove Bank and Trust Building, right there on Turner, next to the building where Munchies used to be. We're gonna have the coffee of the board. So if you want to come, ask questions, meet with the board, all of us will be there. And welcome to come by, we have Jerish Bakery Goods, that doesn't get you there, nothing will. But come on by, it's very informal, a lot of fun, and look forward to hear your questions, concerns, comments, answer anything we can for you. If you don't have an answer, we'll get back to the answer very quickly thereafter. So we look forward to seeing you that day. Lastly, Mr. Jeffrey Charles Frankie, I just want to let people know, as the new year started here, and 2025 is going along, our village is doing very well. Been talking preliminarily with Matt on the budget coming up, because our budget year runs from May 1st, April 30th. And I'd say the village is in good shape, wouldn't you, Mr. Rowan?
Not a bad town to be manager of? Not too bad.
Not a bad town for Mr. Delgado, get a job worth?
Great town.
Yeah, see, made a good choice?
I think so.
So he's got, he's a good-thinking man?
I think so.
Okay, so we did okay working with him. Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
With that said, that ends the mayor's report.
That is a record, you all were here for this, too.
Is it a festive as a miracle?
It's something.
Now let's see how the trustees do.
Yeah.
We're working on it. I should. I gotta do Kobe.
I told you he's not done.
Kobe, come on down. That doesn't count from here.
What do you mean it doesn't count?
Caroline, working, I'm trying hard. We'll see in a minute. Okay, Kobe's coming down here. Kobe, as everyone knows, is our Public Works Director. And we mentioned briefly at the last board meeting, but today we're actually gonna be able to present. Public Works worked together with the village to put in the Clermont Bridge that was rebuilt, redone, right there off Clermont Street between the two Clermots across Salt Creek. If you remember, Salt Creek, the Clermont Bridge there was the last linchpin for our flood mitigation project. They start off with redoing the Bussy Dam, and that was a big project. Remember, Bussy Dam was the first time in Illinois history that a flood mitigation project was done between two counties. Because remember, it affects not only Elk Grove and Cook County, but also in DuPage County. So we did it together. We had Tony Preckwinkle came out, and the former chairman, Cronin, Dan Cronin, came out, and we did a dedication on that. And we submitted that, and so the importance is this, it was the last little linchpin for floodwater going down Salt Creek. The old bridge has been there for decades, it was kind of tight, little earth, this new one spread open the area, made a wider venue for the water to get through, and it solved the problems. And remember, Bussy Dam's since been fixed? Had no problems. Elk Grove Boulevard used to flood three, four times a year? Never. I mean, it's been great, so done well. So anyways, Kobe's got for us here, a plaque we received, it was the APWA Suburban Branch, 2025 Public Works Project of the Year, transportation, less than $5 million, and was presented to Elk Grove Village this year on the Clermont Bridge, pedestrian bridge oversight. So Kobe, guys and everyone did a great job, here, take a look there, good job. And remember, we got Channel 6 Zoom in there on the picture, there's a dedication, but look at the bridge, it's gorgeous at night, it's absolutely beautiful, the lights, you go by, Megan lives like a block away from there, so gave me a chance to go by it a lot at nighttime and see how nice it looks. That bridge is always being used, too. People are always using that bridge, more than ever before, by far. So matter of fact, there's a little baby Arvo.
Yeah, right there.
He was there for the ribbon cutting, so it worked out, my last grandkid, so it went well. So Kobe, I want to thank you on that, so you want to say a couple of words about it?
Well, just to echo your point, you know, we widened the bridge from 200 feet to 400 feet, and this project's been ongoing for probably three, four years now. This is one of the projects we got some federal funding for, which we didn't think we ever would, but at 2. something million dollars, it was very well needed. The engineering team worked really, really hard on this project, and you know, all the credit goes to them, so.
Did well.
It was awesome, yeah.
Kobe, congratulations.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Another great job, thank you. Don't believe what he says.
I was telling him what a great mayor you were.
Like I said, don't believe what he says. Okay, with that.
Any other, any other reports?
With that complete, Mr. Trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie, move on to trustee's report. Trustee Bush?
No report this evening.
See, the rookie comes through, you notice that?
You may want to skip her.
Trustee Frankie?
No report.
Trustee Schmidt?
Just report that our Sister Cities group met Monday night with our students, our students will be finishing the second half of our student exchange program, and March it will be going to our Sister City and Termini and Medici. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Jerish?
Just a quick report on Pads Shelter at Christus Victor this year. We are halfway into the winter season, and they are averaging about 33 to 35 guests per Sunday night. Their shelter stays this year have already surpassed what they did last year by more than 100. So there really is a need out there. They've had a combination of both men and women, and this year especially, they've even had women and children who have been a part of the program. There's a great group of volunteers, and we're encouraging more of you to sign up and help. There is a need for the cleanup shift, which would occur on Monday mornings from 6:30 till 7:30 a.m. And you can sign up or find more about it by going to christusvictorcllutheran.org on their website. My second announcement is the community blood drive for Elk Grove is Saturday, February 8th, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And you can go to elkgrove.org/blooddrive for more information, you can pre-register or walk in, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, don't blame me, Caroline. Trustee Miller?
I only have one thing, but I want to report on a new pediatric clinic that we have here in town. It is called Nest Pediatrics, and I was able to take part in the ribbon cutting ceremony and the celebration. It's amazing. Obviously, they're a clinic that will take same-day visits as well as appointments, sick and well-being. So if you are in need, if you have a grandchild or a child or a neighbor that needs some medical attention, I highly recommend Nest Pediatrics, and it's at 901 Beasterfield, Suite 213. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We move on now to accounts payable warrant for January 28th, 2025.
Excuse me. I make a motion we pay the accounts payable warrant for January 28th, 2025 for $543,154.09 and 0.09.
We have a motion by trustee Frankie, you have a second?
Second.
We have a second by trustee Miller, just so everyone knows that Mr. Delgado paid for tonight. He had the nine cents, the .09, yeah, that's right there. Lori, can you call the roll?
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Jerish?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Bush?
Aye.
Motion passes five to nothing. Tonight, we have consent agenda, we have items A through F, but we're gonna remove item F, so now it becomes A, B, C, D, E, F.
A through E.
A through E. A is in what, Mr. Delgado? Apple? Through E is in what?
Elk Grove Village.
That's three words. Elk is fine, we'll go with that. Rookie mistake, it's okay. So we have items A through E, F has been deleted, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Miller, a second by trustee Schmidt, without objection, we record the vote as previously demonstrated. There's no items under regular agenda, anything for plant commission, Mr. Rowan?
No items under plant commission and no items under zoning board of appeals.
I should note that tonight, under consent agenda, we did pass the Let their decisions reflect justice and compassion and genuine care for the people that they serve as a church in this community. We desire to be more than observers. We long to be active partners, working hand in hand to meet the hands of those around us. So we pray that you were light, would shine through these opportunities that you have granted us. So we ask that you would continue to lead our steps. We confess that no man or policy can fully bring the justice and peace that our hearts long for. True justice flows from your hand and lasting peace comes from you. So I pray that you bless this time, bless this meeting, God. Fill it with a spirit of unit and respect and purpose. And help us, God, guide us to build a community that reflects your love and your grace and in truth. And we pray all these things in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Flags to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated, folks. As we get started on things here, first I should, under the mayor and board of trustees' report, first let's do the approval of the minutes of January 14th, 2025. Oh, pastor, my God, I'm gonna go to hell for sure now.
Well, we knew that already.
Hang on, Pastor, come here, my God. I have no counsel sitting next to me. I'm so worried I'm gonna do something wrong. Okay, so now he gets extra. So out of guilt, I'm trying to buy my way out of purgatory. Pastor, that's for you. Thank you for your time. Appreciate everything. I hope the church is doing well. Village Point Church, great church. If you're looking for someplace to worship, definitely go there. Thanks, Pastor.
Thanks.
See what you do to me, Mr. Delgado?
I apologize, ma'am.
Do things good, make a good impression.
I will get better.
Okay, back now to approve the minutes of January 14th, 2025.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of January 14th, 2025, and dispense with the reading.
Very good. You know, I'm impressed.
I watch these things on TV.
Did you watch it like 50 times? Did you practice at home in front of Mary? Second.
All the time.
Did you?
She voted no.
Okay, we have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Frankie, a second by trustee Jerish. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, let the record show and ask approval. Mayor and board of trustees report. Yes, don't change your TV, don't correct the image or anything. We do have a real attorney here tonight. To my left here is Mr. Michael Delgado with the firm Delgado and Associates.
Delgado Law Group, yes.
Delgado Law Group. And he is gonna be our backup attorney now with the village, and we're excited about that and look forward to it. And again, we're excited to actually have an attorney here for the first time in 32 years I've been in board of the board. But we welcome you, Mike.
Thank you, ma'am.
Wish you well. Again, I apologize for the nameplate. Do not hold that against us. And I know George is watching, because he does watch when he's down there.
Oh, yeah.
So we do miss you, George. Yeah, okay. We miss you. Hope you come back safely. Okay, we move on to our mayor's report. Record mayor's report tonight, gentlemen, let's get the clock going.
Yeah.
Go. Just two items. One, on April 10th, at the Belvedere, we'll be doing the annual Village Mayor State of the Village address. I want to encourage people that want to come by, see what's going on in the village and do well. I gotta break my record from last year, so that's why I'm pushing early to fill that place up. So I encourage you to that. Lastly, actually, one more thing. This Saturday, February 1st, from 9:00 to 11:00, remember it's at 75 Turner, the old Elk Grove Bank and Trust Building, right there on Turner, next to the building where Munchies used to be, we're gonna have the coffee of the board. So if you want to come, ask questions, meet with the board, all of us will be there. And welcome to come by. We have Jerish Bakery Goods. That doesn't get you there, nothing will. But come on by, it's very informal, a lot of fun, and look forward to hear your questions, concerns, comments, answer anything we can for you. If you don't have an answer, we'll get back to the answer very quickly thereafter. So we look forward to seeing you that day. Lastly, Mr. Jeffrey Charles Frankie. I just want to let people know, as the New Year's started here and 2025 is going along, our village is doing very well. Been talking preliminarily with Matt on the budget coming up, because our budget year runs from May 1st, April 30th. And I'd say the village is in good shape. What did you, Mr. Rome?
Not a bad town to be manager of? Not too bad.
Not a bad town for Mr. Delgado, get a job worth?
Great town.
Yeah, see, made a good choice?
I think so.
So he's got, he's a good-thinking man?
I think so.
Okay, so we did okay working with him. Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
With that said, that is the mayor's report.
That is a record. You all were here for this, too.
Is it as festive as a miracle?
It's something.
Now let's see how the trustees do. We're working on it. I should. I gotta do Kobe.
I told you he's not done.
Kobe, come on down. That doesn't count for mayor's report.
What do you mean it doesn't count?
Caroline, I'm working. I'm trying hard. We'll see in a minute. Okay, Kobe's coming down here. Kobe, as everyone knows, is our Public Works Director. And we mentioned briefly the last board meeting, but today we're actually gonna be able to present. Public Works worked together with the village to put in the Clermont Bridge that was rebuilt, redone, right there off Clermont Street between the two Clermonts across Salt Creek. If you remember, Salt Creek, the Clermont Bridge there was the last linchpin for our flood mitigation project. They start off with redoing the Bussy Dam, and that was a big project. Remember, Bussy Dam was the first time in Illinois history that a flood mitigation project was done between two counties. Because remember, it affects not only Elk Grove and Cook County, but also into Page County. So we did it together. We had Tony Preckwinkle came out and the former chairman, Cronin, Dan Cronin, came out, and we did a dedication on that. And we submitted that. And so the importance is this, it was the last little linchpin for floodwater going down Salt Creek. The old bridge has been there for decades. It was kind of tight, little earth. This new one spread open the area, made a wider venue for the water to get through, and it solved, you know, the problems. And remember, Bussy Dam since it's been fixed? Had no problems. Elk Grove Boulevard used to flood three, four times a year? Never. I mean, it's been great. So done well. So anyways, Kobe's got for us here. A plaque we received. It was the APWA Suburban Branch 2025 Public Works Project of the Year, transportation, less than $5 million, and was presented to Elk Grove Village this year on the Clermont Bridge, pedestrian bridge oversight. So Kobe, guys and everyone did a great job. Here, take a look there. Good job. And remember, we got the channel six zoom in there on the picture, there's a dedication, but look at the bridge. It's gorgeous at night. It's absolutely beautiful with the lights you go by. Megan lives like a block away from there, so gave me a chance to go by it a lot at nighttime and see how nice it looks. That bridge is always being used, too. People are always using that bridge, more than ever before by far. So matter of fact, there's a little baby Arlo. He was there for the ribbon cutting, so it worked out. My last grandkid, so it went well. So Kobe, I want to thank you on that. So you want to say a couple words about?
Well, just to echo your point, you know, we widened the bridge from 200 feet to 400 feet, and this project's been ongoing for probably three, four years now. This is one of the projects we got some federal funding for, which we didn't think we ever would, but at 2 point something million dollars, it was very well needed. The engineering teams worked really, really hard on this project and, you know, all the credit goes to them, so it was awesome.
Kobe, congratulations.
Yeah, thank you very much, sir.
Another great job. Thank you. Don't believe what he says.
I was telling him what a great mayor you were.
Like I said, don't believe what he says. Okay.
Any other, any other reports?
With that complete, Mr. Trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie, move on to trustees' report. Trustee Bush.
No report this evening.
See, the rookie comes through. Notice that?
You may want to skip her.
Trustee Frankie.
No report.
Trustee Schmidt.
Just report that our Sister Cities group met Monday night with our students. Our students will be finishing the second half of our student exchange program, and March it'll be going to our Sister City and Termina Medici. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Jerish.
Just a quick report on pads shelter at Christus Victor this year. We are halfway into the winter season, and they are averaging about 33 to 35 guests per Sunday night. Their shelter stays this year have already surpassed what they did last year by more than 100. So there really is a need out there. They've had a combination of both men and women, and this year especially, they've even had women and children who have been a part of the program. There's a great group of volunteers, and we're encouraging more of you to sign up and help. There is a need for the cleanup shift, which would occur on Monday mornings from 6:30 till 7:30 a.m. And you can sign up or find more about it by going to christusvictorcllutheran.org on their website. My second announcement is the community blood drive for Elk Grove is Saturday, February 8th, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And you can go to elkgrove.org backslash blood drive for more information. You can pre-register or walk in, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Don't blame me, Caroline. Trustee Miller.
I only have one thing, but I want to report on a new pediatric clinic that we have here in town. It is called Nest Pediatrics, and I was able to take part in the ribbon cutting ceremony and the celebration. It's amazing. Obviously, they're a clinic that will take same-day visits as well as appointments, sick and well-being. So if you are in need, if you have a grandchild or a child or a neighbor that needs some medical attention, I highly recommend Nest Pediatrics, and it's at 901 Beasterfield Suite 213. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We move on now to accounts payable warrant for January 28th, 2025.
I make a motion we pay the accounts payable warrant for January 28th, 2025 for $543,154.09.
We have a motion by trustee Frankie. You have a second?
Second.
We have a second by trustee Miller. Just so everyone knows, that Mr. Delgado paid for tonight. Yeah, the nine cents, the .09. Yeah, that's right there. Lori, can you call the roll?
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Jerish?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Bush?
Aye.
Motion passes five to nothing. Tonight, we have considered agenda, we have items A through F, but we're gonna remove item F. So now it becomes A, B, C, D, E, F.
A through E.
A through E. A as in what, Mr. Delgado? Apple? Through E as in what?
Elk Grove Village?
That's three words. Elk is fine. We'll go with that. Rookie mistake, it's okay. So we have items A through E. F has been deleted. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Miller, a second by trustee Schmidt. Without objection, we call the vote as previously demonstrated. There's no items under regula agenda. Anything for plan commission, Mr. Rome?
No items under plan commission and no items under zoning board of appeals.
I should note that tonight, under consideration agenda, we did pass the ordinance to do the agreement for our new senior housing coming over on 750 Arlington Road behind Topapa, the old Dr. Riggs spot, and we're glad that's moving forward, looking forward to that soon, I hope. And thank you. You guys could've gone anywhere you chose Elk Grove. We appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, nothing zoning, you said? Nothing zoning? Okay, recycling waste committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie, 7:32.
Yeah, just, we're still accepting the old holiday lights. I know the weather just broke, so people finally maybe got outside to take stuff down. We're still collecting until the end of April. It's right outside here in the, outside the council chambers. Bring in their lights, don't throw them in the garbage, we'll recycle them, and that, again, until April 30th. That's it.
Thank you. Judiciary Plan and Zoning, trustee Prochnow. Not here, anybody have a report for?
No.
Capital Improvement Committee, trustee Schmidt.
Capital Improvement Committee will be meeting this Friday, January 31st, at 10 o'clock at the Public Works Facility, Devon Avenue, with village staff to discuss our 2025 roadway maintenance program. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Cable Television Committee, trustee Jerish.
I just want to encourage everybody to watch the recent episode of In the Grove. Trustee Frankie did an awesome interview job with Police Chief Dorn, and just a great job, you guys. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Youth Committee, trustee Bush.
Scholarships are on the village website for seniors that are graduating, and they'll be due sometime in April. Please check it out. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Information Committee, trustee Miller.
The police department is inviting community members to their next neighborhood watch meeting, which is this Thursday, January 30th, at 7:00 p.m. Obviously, if you want to know what the crime trends are and how to protect yourself, you should attend. And also, this spring, the Public Works Department will be holding their third Citizens Public Works Academy for residents interested in learning more about the Public Works Department and all the operations that they do. It's a five-week academy beginning on April 16th, and will take place on Wednesday evenings from 6:00 to 8:30 at the Public Works Facility located on 450 East Devon Avenue. You'll learn all about the operations, various tour, you'll tour various facilities, and you'll get to see the heavy-duty vehicles and equipment that crews use on a daily basis. If you're interested, please complete the application and waiver form that can be found on the website, elkgrove.org/citizensacademy, or you can call the Public Works Department at 847-734-8800. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Business Leaders Forum, trustee Schmidt.
No report.
Health Care Services, trustee Prochnow not here. Anybody have a report? No? Personnel Committee, trustee Schmidt.
No report.
Airport update, there's nothing reported this time, even though we're still waiting for Chicago to give us updated information to make sure they compare both alternatives for the fly choir program. We have a next SOC meeting, hopefully have it scheduled for Thursday, February 6th, correct? Very good. Prayer Committee, no report. Our first meeting will be April 1st. Midsummer Classic Concert Series, Mr. Delgado, what was our lineup last summer?
Last summer.
What's our lineup from last summer?
Can I get back to you on that one, ma'am? I know this summer's lineup.
I'm just pimping with a little bit, because he's got, Mr. Knickerbocker prepped him, but we'll let you go ahead. We have our third concert. Who's our third concert this year?
Scotty McCreery.
Very good. Where's that take place?
Village Hall.
Wow, George really prepped them. Our 4th of July kickoff to summer concerts will be?
That'd be Cheap Trick at Rotary Green.
Wow. Where's Cheap Trick from? Where are they formed?
I don't know that one.
Rockford. Rockford, Illinois. Our last concert of the year this year?
That would be Bachman-Turner Overdrive.
And that will be where?
I didn't write that one down.
So now where are the people going, Elk Grove? They'll be driving around in circles, they won't know.
There will be great signage. That'll be at Village Hall, ma'am.
Very good. And then our second band, which you young folks know, is?
OAR, or some people say OR. And that will be at Rotary Fest.
Very good. Boy, I'm impressed, Mr. Delgado. Good job. So we got a lineup coming on. Mr. Knickerbocker thought ahead, was good to tell you. And I can't remember last summer's concert either, so you're good. Okay, Special Vents Committee, our next one, I know trustee Prochnow's not here, will be our Memorial Day event, Memorial Day at the Pavilion. Liquor Commission, no report. Report from village manager.
No report.
Very good. What time is it, Caroline? I can't see the clock from here. Oh, I got six minutes. I can do a whole dialogue. This is good. Report from village clerk, Lori.
No report.
Wow. Okay, any unfinished business? Always got to check on the attorney. Yeah, he's got nothing under there. So nothing there? Any new business ideas from trustees tonight?
Motion to adjourn?
Huh? Not yet, not yet.
That was my new business, though.
No, no, that'll come up soon. Got it. Helen, how things going? Everyone happy? Everyone getting excited? In a couple months, I come see everybody?
Of course.
They can't sleep? They can't sleep yet, can they? No? Okay. Anything else? Keith, you feeling pretty good? Still got two more days to worry about. Wait till two more days, you'll be good. Okay, Mr. Delgado, we still got five minutes left. You've gone to many towns.
Yes.
Many board meetings.
Yes.
Any more relaxed, enjoyable as this?
Never, none, none.
Got to have fun, right?
Yes.
This is a lame one for us. Normally, we have a lot more going on, things happening, more discussions, but we welcome you.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity, and thank you for allowing me to be here in St. George's place.
And you come with great reputation and a great history, and we appreciate you being part of this.
Well, ruin it. Thank you.
Yeah, don't tell anybody you're at Elk Grove. That'd be bad. So, but I don't know if I told you real quick, we were at the, what's that called? Align Data Center. They still watch our meetings. They came in November and present that check. The one woman who said, right, Matt was there, is witness.
I think she's crazy.
She still watched our meeting. She said, "We have the most enjoyable board meetings of any," and they've gone to many board meetings. Then she goes, "I can't believe I'm on your board." Then she asked, "Did you make your concert lineup yet?" Because when they came, I said we're gonna announce in December. So we made an lineup, told her, they couldn't believe what we got. They're gonna come for Cheap Trick, I think they said. They want to see Cheap Trick. So, see, we should, we should go like, I don't know, we should get a Grammy or something. Not Grammy, what do they call? What does TV shows get? Emmys? We should get an Emmy. No, we should get an Emmy for this show. Yeah, Golden Globe, look at this.
Let's go for the EGOT. Emmy, Grammy, Oscar, and a Tony, get all four.
You'd have to sing and dance.
This guy, I tell you, this guy's. This guy's a sharp guy, I told you that.
Too sharp.
Too sharp.
I think Jamie, Jamie Foxx.
Jennifer Hudson got it? Jamie Foxx got it?
No, wait, what is that again, real quick?
An Emmy, a Grammy, and Oscar, and a Tony.
EGOT.
Emmy, Grammy.
Oscar.
And Tony. Because at one time, there's only one human that ever got all three, and that was Burl Ives. That's back a number of years, because he got it for, what song do you think he got it for?
White Christmas.
Jimmy Jack Corrigan, I Don't Care. You got that? You got the Tony for Big Country, or the Oscar for Big Country, and you got a Tony for some Broadway show he did. So someone's actually won those three plus something else?
He did something besides Frosty's Snowman or something?
No, it was Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer. He was a snowman.
Have a holly, jolly Christmas.
Yep. Okay, we got 30 seconds, so I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Now we gotta redo everything. We have a motion by trustee Miller, a second by trustee Bush. Lori, can you call the roll?
Trustee Jerish?
Aye.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Bush?
Aye.
Motion adjourned, passes 5 to nothing, meeting adjourned.
Out of Crawford, New Jersey, our local municipal channel, TV 35, is a major source of hyper-local information that is specifically designed and created for our residents alone. We get to see our town meetings, concerts, high school sports, news, and more on a channel that is strictly about our community. The value of public, educational, and government stations was clearly demonstrated during the COVID-19 pandemic. All-access channels provide crucial information, including press conferences and emergency updates from their municipal governments directly to their citizens. Today, the very existence of PEG channels is under attack. Access channels have been historically supported by a special surcharge that subscribers pay on their monthly cable bill, which is passed back to each municipality.